This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
Whether we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
Without the agenda?
Still moved.
First by Kaylin, second by Rick, all those in favor?
Sorry.
Matt passes six to zero. This time will you join me for the pledge of allegiance? It's way over in the corner.
Where's it?
To the corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Still moved. First by Rick, second by Jill. All those in favor? Matt passes six to zero. Moving right on to recognition, Dr. Bolingmore.
If it pleases the board, we'd like to present the Classified Employee of the Month, and we actually have five of them we wanted to recognize this month. So these are the five custodians and maintenance personnel at Lewis ECC over in the building in the trailers. And so Dr. Comstock recognized them for all of their hard work they put in this summer. And I have a little quote from her. "So Lewis and ECC custodians worked very hard all summer to move furniture, clean tables, and do everything to prepare the building for students and staff. We are truly grateful for their hard work and teamwork." And the employees are Michelle McCarty, Mark Flume, Lenny Smith, James Wallace, and Beine Rissinger. So we went over and presented them with a certificate and also a new Tigers water cup so they could stay cool during those warm months. But we really did want to make sure that we went over and they knew the appreciation from all of us in the district. They worked their tails off all summer long through the heat, trying to get all those things ready, working around construction to essentially move two buildings into one. So we were very proud of them, want to make sure that they knew that we wanted to recognize and thank them.
Congratulations. All right, next up, MSBA delegate report, Karen. Got some video.
Welcome to the September edition of the Missouri School Board's Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the release of this year's state assessment data. The preliminary results released by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education show overall statewide scores are mixed when compared to the prior year. ELA showed small improvements in elementary grades and in high school, and small declines or flattening in middle school. Mathematics scores showed increases in most grades and courses. Science scores maintained with the exception of an increase in biology. Regarding the results, Commissioner of Education Margie Van Deven said the data emphasizes the need to continue deploying state and local resources to best support and promote student learning.
If we're going to embrace literacy, let's do it all the way, right? And we know what we need to do there, and let's focus on that. Let's focus on early learning. Let's keep focusing on great teachers at every classroom, growing our principals to support those teachers, making sure we have superintendents who are hiring good principals to support the teachers, training our local school board members. These are things that I think we have all agreed are primary to making sure we move the needle.
With schools across the state back in session, don't forget to share the excitement of students, staff, and the entire public school community with your local legislators. Invite your legislators to celebrate the return to school with a day touring your school district. MSBA President Ruth Johnson says that activities such as legislator visits are just part of year-round advocacy efforts.
I truly believe that advocacy begins with relationships. That is something that I began my first year of being on my local board, and it's vitally important that you reach out and get connected with your elected officials at your city level, your county level, your state level, and federal level even. Getting those relationships before you need to have those hard discussions is crucial.
In addition to building relationships with legislators, building relationships and networking with peers is a great way for school board members to learn various approaches to common challenges. With that in mind, MSBA's fall regional meetings are back. Fall meetings return in each of MSBA's 17 regions this September and October. These events give local board members the opportunity to learn and network with colleagues from their part of the state. Sign up for your region's meetings and come ready to play. MSBA's leadership development team has created an engaging and educational challenge where members will team up and work together to answer school board scenarios. To find the date and location of your region's meeting, visit the MSBA website. And it's not too late to register for the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials. The conference will be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, along with a great lineup of general session speakers. The conference will also feature the Education Expo, the Student Showcase, and much more. Visit the MSBA website for more information. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in October for the next MSBA Board Report. As we wrap up, here are some closing thoughts specifically for board members from MSBA President Ruth Johnson as we start a new school year.
I would just say to other local board members, enjoy what you do. This is a journey that will change you, and you will see public education in a completely different way. You will see that students are truly what matters most, and everything that we do as a board member should revolve around is what we're doing, is what we're deciding, making it better for students to learn every day.
Anything further, Karen?
No.
No visitors?
No.
Moving on to cabinet reports, academic services, Dr. Miller.
Thank you. Thank you. So just like the commissioner was talking about, literacy is my primary focus as well. So I wanted to share a little bit about new program that we have, Wit and Wisdom. I'll always give you an update of what's happening with the new program. So I went in several classrooms, and it was incredible seeing the level of work that the kids were capable of doing. I think I've seen several Facebook posts too of teachers actually posting their lessons online and saying that they're learning right along with the kids. Mrs. Haskell at Cornerstone actually posted this, and I thought it was adorable. So everything is a thematic unit that they go into, so all the books that they read and the lessons that they're doing to build up that background knowledge like I've been talking about. And so the kindergartners are learning about famous paintings, and a lot of them are, I mean, it's not the ones that you would think about, but they're actually like unwrapping all of these paintings and then reading things about them. So it's just really exciting to get into the work that they're doing. Look forward to, looking forward to seeing what else they can do. A picture of this board here, most of the classrooms, we didn't make it mandatory because it's brand new, but it will be coming that way. They actually have focus questions, so anytime you walk into an elementary classroom, I encourage you to ask the kids about what they're reading about. They even have, each of the units came with almost like a mini library where the kids can check out books that are at their grade level to actually dig a little bit deeper in these thematic units. So, so far, the launch of Wit and Wisdom has gone very, very well. So super impressed with the teachers. They are embracing the chaos that always comes along with any new launch. It's going very, very well. So again, I've shown you Scarborough's Reading Rope several times. Just a quick reminder that we've got, still supporting the science of reading. Returning teachers this year, K-3, will be starting their second year of letters. So this was huge in the support of the push towards literacy, is making sure that all of the teachers were trained. They actually came to me and said, you know, again, we've got to do a better job for our kids. So at the end of this year, every K-3 teacher will be trained. Many other districts are actually taking the approach of they send, they do a train-the-trainer model where they send their instructional coaches, or they send two or three teachers, and then they come back and kind of share what they learned. We are actually sending all of our teachers to our PDC over at Union Station to get the training. So again, thank you for all the support that it takes to make sure that every teacher has that opportunity. After this year, it's my hope that we can find funding enough to also do grade four, five, and six to make sure that they get that representation as well. Elementary principals and myself are actually going through the administrators' training, and there's been some eye-opening things. I'm a high school person, and so this has really been cool for me, but they actually make you, they make you understand what it's like to read a language that you're not familiar with, which as an adult, you know, it's hard to put yourself in the shoes of a five-year-old, but they do a really good job. So that being said, I wanted to give you a reading passage and just give you 20 or 30 seconds to read through it. So we talk a lot about what it's like to read at 80% mastery, and as an adult, without background knowledge and without the appropriate skill, this is a passage at 80% mastery. Does anyone have any guesses as to what this passage is about?
Only because I read the bottom there.
Yeah, you don't know how these people work over here. So this literally is what it's like for some of our students to take assessments, because they're taking grade level assessments, and so some of our students are two to three grade levels behind. This was really powerful for me because this is what it's like to read at 80%. Some of our students are reading at 20 to 30% mastery at their grade level. So that's why like I'm so passionate and excited about the work that we're doing for literacy. The systems that we have in place now will be able to, you could scrub and show them the answers now. Some of the systems that we have in place will not only identify that a kid is, you know, needing some reading interventions, but it really pinpoints where they're lacking. And we've just started that work with our STAR assessments, and the teachers and the administrators are absolutely tearing it up. It's enough to be able to say, you know, we know that your kid can't read well, or this student isn't reading on grade level, but teachers are always hungry for what now? Like where do I even start with a kid who's two to three grade levels behind? Now we have all of these amazing systems, and it truly is a system. It's not one thing over another to where they have all of the tools to be able to change, to change a kid for the better. So again, this is not a difficult reading passage, but if you didn't have background knowledge, if you didn't have, were never exposed to the vocabulary, those are all of the things other than sampling words out that it takes in order to read a complex passage. So if, it's hard to get a kid exposed to complex passages when they're two to three grade levels behind, and it's hard to get them to ever read on grade level when they're only reading things two to three grade levels behind. So if you're reading a second grade book in fifth grade, it's hard to ever get enough background knowledge to ever be familiar with text. So I'm going to try to give these mini literacy lessons to you guys so that you guys can, I know I don't have to with Jill, but it's just been really incredible to see the shifts in education and really being able to target kids and be able to tell them, to give them everything that they need to be successful wherever they're at. So I'm just thrilled with this. So we started dyslexia screenings, and on the left, I wanted to give you another indication, that's what it's like for a dyslexic child or dyslexic person to read. It's a coding issue. They've already began dyslexia screenings. A lot of the buildings are actually finished with it. So the next step after that, there is one simple test. It's just a coding system where a student identifies in a line to see if the brain can process the beginning and the end. And it's literally called a rapid auto naming test. It is just a glimpse if a kid is going to have issues that could lead to dyslexia. So after that, parents get a letter that say, we're going to keep an eye on your student. They may be at risk for dyslexia, but I don't want anyone to freak out. And so if you get parent phone calls, this is the very first step, and we do a million interventions and activities and assessments before, to give them what they need. We never diagnose for dyslexia, but we always give a kid what they need. It's just kind of giving a parent a heads up. So if you get any parent phone calls on that, that letter is just as response to the very, very first test that we do.
If a parent has a question about having their kids diagnosed, you're able to refer them to where they can do that?
So a medical doctor actually gives a diagnosis for dyslexia. It's never going to be our teachers. It's never going to be us, but what I always tell parents is that regardless of the reading level that your kid's at, we're going to help them with whatever they have, with whatever they need at any time. So just wanted to clarify that for you, and a lot of parents like get a letter of saying, hey, we're keeping an eye on your kid, and it can freak them out. But literally, it's, and that's a state-recognized thing where we have to give parents a letter. It would be within the first 30 days of school. It would be great if we had enough time to really dig deep to see what was going on with a kid as far as literacy goes, to be able to give them more information. But I just wanted to give you and really a parent a heads up that that's just the very first indication that there may be something wrong. But even if it is, we'll give a kid what they need every single time.
Does that happen just at the beginning of the school year?
It doesn't. Actually, it's three times a year. In kindergarten, we don't assess them at the beginning. They wait until December. And any kid who is flagged for dyslexia within the first 30 days, so every single kid that is flagged as possibly having dyslexia, and I will tell you that I was, I don't want to use the word alarmed, but there were far more people that, or far more students that actually will be receiving letters. There was a lot more than I thought that would be flagged, because again, it's the very first introductory thing, and you have to understand that kids haven't been in school, and it's hard to get a kid to sit through an assessment for 30 seconds, let alone, so I mean, a lot of different things can happen. But yes, Jill, they actually, a kindergartner can't sit still at all until around December. Even then, like your hopes is that they can sit still long enough to get that first indication. All of the STAR literacy assessments, every assessment, we don't start with kindergarten until December. So they're working on, which it's a hoot to go see some of these kindergarten classrooms, they're working on expressing their feelings correctly and standing on line and all of those things just to, just to be managed by their teachers. So one of the things that we did make mandatory this year are things called sound walls. So in addition to reading and background knowledge and all of the things that I've been talking about, a lot of kids aren't taught, I know that it's not something that we have intentionally done, how to place their mouths, their tongue, their lips, their teeth. Each, it takes a lot to create each individual sound, and so we have to have these sound walls in our K-3 classrooms that really help a teacher focus on helping a kid sound out words. What they're finding is that a lot of this work actually lowers the kids that need speech and language development, like it's really a necessary thing. So really, this is the work that a speech and language pathologist would do with a kid, once you determine that there is a need. So every kid is basically being exposed to this to actually teach them the correct way to pronounce words. Again, back to the STAR assessment, I can't wait to show you some baseline data in October. By the end of September, they should have all of that data in place. I can tell you that every, there are a lot of data pieces that you can run. There's a lot of ways to look at student data, but you can't do any of them until kids test, like you can't run reports on data that you don't have. So now that the kids are starting to take the assessments, it's all I've been doing is spending about a half day trying to look at different reports and different ways to look at it. So I'm super excited to be able to share that with you, and I'll continue to share the progress that we make as a district. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Next up, Human Services, Dr. Everett.
Thank you. Okay, I think I'm on. The first thing that I wanted to talk to you guys about was just to give you a little update on how our Resource Fair went in August. So we handed out 188 backpacks full of school supplies, so that's 188 students that were served by all of those efforts. So that was pretty exciting. We also had 23 families that set up appointments for the Clay County Clothes Closet, and Bethany said we weren't, they were able to fill all of their spots for, you know, their clothing opportunities for the fall. So really cool way to kick off the school year, lots of families getting supports and the different help that they need. To piggyback on that, the next piece is Operation School Bell. So I don't know how familiar you guys all are with that. I, from coming from a high school world, was not really familiar with how cool this program is, but Kim Curtis partners with the Assistance League of Kansas City, and currently we have seven dates set up for Operation School Bell. So our, we work with our transportation, and they take kids during the school day there, and they get just all kinds of school clothes. They get two pairs of pants, a shirt, a hoodie, socks, underwear, hats, scarf, gloves, tennis shoes, and a full hygiene kit. So you'll see as of right now, these are the number of kids that are signed up and actually slated to go. So Cornerstone has 73 students, Lewis has 90, and Elcorn has 27. So again, that's just another really great service that we are able to provide our community just through the partnerships that Kim Curtis has established. The next piece for me is, this is part of our special education compliance. So in our consent agenda today, we had to adopt our local compliance plan. That's just a yearly thing that has to be done by October 1st. But a piece of that is, we have to provide a meeting opportunity where any parent can come who maybe has their student in private school or homeschool or parochial schools, and they may, maybe they feel like their student may qualify for special education services, whether that's speech, or OTPT, or other special education services. They can come to that meeting, and then we can talk about ways that we could potentially help their family, whether it's that they need for an evaluation and for qualification at first, or if they have already qualified, it's just a way for us to connect with them to see what services that we can provide for them. So that meeting is scheduled for September 29th. It's just at District Office, and it's basically myself and our process coordinators will be there and welcome any family that wants to come in and chat about how their student could or could not qualify. And then the Children's Fund, I know we talk about this a lot because they are wonderful and give us money, but we were able to secure a full-time provider from Cornerstones of Care. They are going to, starting October 1st, we're going to have a full-time service provider in our Early Childhood Center. So we've not had mental health support really, you know, full-time there for a while since before COVID. So we were able to secure a contract, and so that person will start October 1st. So we're really excited about that. Another piece of the Children's Fund that I think we're really starting to see take off is our positive behavior intervention support. Our district leadership team today met, we meet as a team once a month, and that is a teacher rep and administrator from every building. And it was amazing today to, everyone's kind of shared how they kicked off the beginning of their school year, and, you know, we talked about this year really being a soft launch and us going slow, and administrators are just running with it and doing amazing things already in the buildings. It's so important that we get those systems and expectations and behavior frameworks really established with teachers and with students so that students have a good, well-managed classroom environment so they can get all these amazing literacy and reading pieces. So once we, you know, Dr. Miller and I have been able to really partner to get these systems that work together so that, and today was really exciting to see kind of, you can see like teachers and administrators are really excited about the direction that they're taking these things this year. So it's going to be a fun year to see how all those things progress. Just a couple of updates that are not listed on my slides. A reminder that the Swope Clinic at the Early Childhood Center, their grand opening is Monday night. So Monday night from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, if you're available to stop by, you can see it. It is a first day, I mean, it will be a clinic day, though we're going to be seeing patients right off the bat, but that's our evening event that night. So if you want to swing by there and see it. The other thing that I wanted to just kind of touch on for a second is, we have a handful of new special education teachers in the district this year, and we've been able to partner with the Regional Professional Development Center to do like a new special education academy. And so we're really trying to get our teachers good professional development to make sure that they can adequately meet the needs of students. And so the first academy meeting is this week for those teachers to go to collaborate with and learn from our compliance specialists. So I'm excited to be able to tell you how that's going in the next month or two.
Did you say 5:30 on Monday?
5:30 to 7:00, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Operations, Dr. Bolingmore.
If it pleases the board, I'd like to give some updates on the district operations so far this year. We're going to kick it off with safety and security to begin. First note I have is, we've applied for the second round of the school safety grant, very apropos, I already had this to present tonight. Last year, we applied, Governor Parsons allowed about a $20 million budget for school safety grant. We applied, and essentially, we were told compared to the other districts, we're too safe and we got $0. So he allocated $50 million this year. The deadline was, I think, the beginning of September, so we applied for about $300, $400,000 worth of safety grants to update some of the things around the district that we've identified that we would like to continue to make more safe. So we'll hear back from that. Hopefully, since there's, you know, two and a half times more money, hopefully we have a better chance of getting some of those dollars that can help some of the things that we have on our long-range plan. Feeding into that, I wanted just to give a little recap follow-up on our emergency situation we had at the middle school. First of all, I'd like just to start off by commending all of those that were involved in addressing and resolving the situation we had at the middle school. From the student who reported it, to the teacher who got the report, to the administrator, to the SRO, to all of the emergency personnel who responded, in our opinion, it was handled flawlessly. 611 students showed up to the middle school that day, and 611 students got to go home to their families, and that's the best thing you can hope for. For those of you that don't know, at about 7:12 AM, a student reported to one of the staff members as they were waiting out front that a student may have a weapon or gun in their backpack. That staff member immediately reported it to the school principal, who immediately alerted the SRO. They went outside, addressed the student, secured both the student and the backpack separately, had them in the office, and began their investigation by 7:13. So that's less than two minutes from the report to the time that it was addressed, at which point they made Mr. Kimsey, our Safety and Security Director, they made him aware of what was happening. So him and our high school SRO went down to, or the elementary SRO went over to the middle school to help assist with the situation as the ESPD was notified, and they were coming outside as well as juvenile. At that point, I had been communicating with Mr. Kimsey, Dr. Coffin, the middle school principal, I'd been communicating with Dr. Tomlinson, just so we have all avenues of communication, everyone was aware of what was happening. Once we got more information, we were able to put together a little release to middle school families and parents. And so when we do a release like that, our main goal is to provide accurate and comprehensive information as effectively and efficiently as possible. Doing that in a written letter release allows us to convey those detailed updates and resources while ensuring consistency in the information and the message, and that's why we chose to send home a letter. At that point, we also chose to put it on social media so people were aware and they could check their email. We know that there are families, we recognize that some families prefer phone messages in a situation like that to get immediate notifications. The issue with us... The issue with us, the reason that we chose not to at this point in time, and the reason we choose not to during a live emergency situation or meeting you're following, is because when a phone call goes out to hundreds of families, for example, the middle school has 611 students, so you have about 800 calls that will go out at any given time because you have multiple parents that'll get a call. When you do that, anywhere from 10% to 20% of people that get that call either miss the call, or they delete the call because they're in a meeting, or they're not able to check their message, and so they just start calling back. So you're looking anywhere between 10 to 200 calls that could be going back to the middle school. And so when those five phone lines are full, they then start calling central office to find out, hey, why did I miss a call? What's going on? And so during an emergency situation, the last thing that you want is both your building and your central office phone lines to be full in case that situation were to escalate again or another situation in the building, we wouldn't be able to communicate out to emergency personnel. So at that point, that's why a phone call is determined not to go out. You know, the good news is, we're instituting, it was already in our plans, we're instituting an annual security audit. So Safety and Security Audit, it will include communication in as well, but we'll do security audits of each building and facility. What are some needs, where are some strengths, where are some weaknesses? And that can go into future grants as well in our planning as far as the budget's concerned. But overall, we want to commend all those that were involved. We're very proud. When you look at the situation, from the time it was reported to the time that the student and the backpack were secured, was less than two minutes. And it was secured before the students were even started entering the building. And so, you know, I know we've talked to them, but I know at the central office, we're very proud of how the situation was addressed and how it was resolved. And we're very proud of the people that were on site there. As we look at it, so like I said, we're creating a district safety audit that we will do annually to address needs and identify needs throughout the district. Another thing that we have on our docket for this year, and this creates more impetus for it as well, is we have a district emergency crisis plan that just shows in the building, how do you respond to a crisis? You know, when are councils made available? You know, how is communication made? How do you address certain things? And that's a template that Desi provides that you work through with your Safety and Security Team. So that's another thing that we're looking at updating this year. It was already on our docket to do. So that'll be something that we're updating this year as well. And then if you remember from last month by presentation, Mr. Kimsey wrote a grant to receive the Raptor Alert System to utilize in our buildings. So we already utilize a Raptor system that does background checks on any person that enters our building that will be around students. The Raptor Alert System will add another layer of defense, so to speak, to our already current policies and procedures that will then allow us to notify people in the building, specifically staff members, if there's an emergency. And so how we're implementing that, you know, just to not put all of our secrets out there and where we're doing it and what building. But we've trained all the office staff and administrators on how to use this alert system. So for all their drills that they've been doing all year, they use this alert system to alert the office staff, any safety and security personnel, and then me at central office when they're doing a drill. And then it'll tell them the drill, where it's at, how it's happening, and then they'll fill that drill report out. So it's also a good way for us to monitor and track what's happening in the buildings. So as we work through that, we're kind of beta testing it with our office personnel, with our administrators, we'll now begin to get feedback from them on, okay, what types of alerts do we want teachers to get? What types of alerts do we want teachers to be able to put out? Because the last thing that we would want to do is have a system implemented that created chaos last Thursday, and then we're not able to resolve it within two minutes, and people start entering the building and no one knows what to do. So that's why it's really important, and we found it important, that we train our administrators first. We try and work out any bugs. That way, they can be the lead learners in their building when they're doing drills, and we can effectively execute this thing in the buildings as we train our teachers throughout the fall. So that way, it's a tool for us that helps resolve an issue, not a tool that would create more chaos. You know, and I think that when you look back at last Thursday, that was all resolved in under two minutes. That's not by accident, right? We didn't get lucky. We've been doing this for over 10 years, right? We have policies in place, we have practice in place. The student had good relationships with the teacher and with the staff. They knew who to report it to. The teacher knew immediately what to do and when to do it, whenever it was reported to them. The administrator knew, I need to alert the SRO. We need to address the student right away. That's why that's handled. The policy and practices is in place, and they know what to do. And we drill on that all the time. We have schools that are doing drills every week, all year long. And so like I said, we couldn't be more proud of that. I don't know how that could have been done better at the building, but we're going to do these audits, and we're going to put this alert system out there so that way, we can identify ways that we can improve, and that we can keep our students safe, and that we can keep our kids safe. Because nothing's ever perfect, and then we're going to keep trying to get better. So that's just kind of the follow-up on, you know, the district safety audit. Just a recap from last week. The Emergency Raptor Alert System that we're implementing, training staff how to use that so we can fully implement it throughout the year. That's all I have for the safety part. It was a big part, but I want to make sure we hit a lot of those details. Following up with that, food service. So we're getting ready to go through the 2024-29 RFP process. We have to select a new food service company, whether it's Aramark, who gets it again, or someone else. This really has a big impact on our budgets. Conversations that Dr. Tomlinson and I have been having as we plan the budget for next year and also future years, what is the impact of that Food Service Selection Committee? So we'll put together a committee of students, teachers, parents, hopefully, a couple of board members, and we'll sit through this RFP process. Well, they'll come in, they'll present to us, they'll show us menu options, they'll show us what they can do to provide better opportunities for our students throughout the meal service. So we're looking forward to that. It's a very long process. We have to create the RFP, submit it to the state, get it back, close it for 49 days. But my hope is to be done with all of that and present it to you guys for a selection and approval and even the January, February board meeting. So we're looking forward to that, and it will have a big impact on our budget. So it's something that we want to make sure that we do the right way and we do it diligently.
How long are those contracts on them?
They're five years when they run, so it will start next year, and then it'll run for the next five years. And we're actually, there's a lot of new assistant superintendents and executive directors in the operations realm in the Northland. So I'm actually hosting a luncheon tomorrow to go through an RFP roundtable process for Desi because it's one of the RFPs that they, and the RFP is the Request for Proposal Process. When you're doing a big purchase like this as a district, they want to make sure that you're soliciting bids from lots of companies so we're making a good fiduciary selection, right? And so there's a lot of, so we're going to host a roundtable to talk about the process. What's involved in the process? What's the timetable? And selfishly speaking, for those of us in the Northland, we're hoping that there's an economy of scale. If it were to come down to one company, we're able to get all of us, it might benefit all of us because they're able to share some of those costs and it makes our costs cheaper, which is, in the end, it's better for our kids because we can get better resources and materials in the classroom. And I know Dr. Miller deals that. So we're looking forward to that. It's not a fun process, but it will be good for our district and good for the financial planning for the next five years. When we look at the facilities scoreboard, the stuff I talked a little bit about last week, when we look at facilities and grounds. Mr. Marshall is doing a great job of working with a couple of companies and putting together some options for us on what it looks like and looking at what do other schools in our division and our conference, what do they have? And Dr. Wickham has done an excellent job of looking at, what are some future programming opportunities for our students that that could provide if we went with a video board as opposed to just a static board? But again, looking at the budget and planning for the next, you know, five years, 10 years, we want to make sure that we're making a good financial decision, too. So he's putting together some different bid packages and some different options that then we can look at and say, what's the best fit for our district, for our kids, and for future needs? As we know, the board, like I said, when they had to fix it this summer for this fall, they had to dig through like the recycle bin to get parts for it because it's at least 20 years old, and we just can't have that. We're having to put money into speakers every year. We're having to put monies into the microchip. So whatever we do, we need to do something quickly. And ideally, you get it done so that way, you can kind of practice with it in the spring with track and with girls' soccer. So that way, when your big Friday night lights hit, you already have the season under your belt of working with it. So we're excited about the opportunities it could present, and hopefully, they'll be back here next month to kind of present some of those things and maybe what direction we want to go. Career ladder is something new that falls under my regime, I guess, this year as well, or umbrella. And so Mr. Ruby's going to share a little bit with you later about just some new career opportunities that we're looking at exploring for the future. So every time that we add a new CTE course, it helps bump our APR, which we all like, right? Makes us look better. It gives our students new opportunities to excel. And so he'll talk about some of those opportunities that we're exploring moving forward. Career ladder. So we just got back, the deadline passed of who's interested in doing career ladder, and now they're working on their applications. So we have about 250 teachers in the district. About 195 to 200 of them are eligible for career ladder, and 172 of those teachers have decided they want to participate in career ladder. So we're really excited, not only for the opportunities that provides the teacher to put some extra cash in their pocket, but also the opportunities it's going to provide our students through intermurals, through professional development that Dr. Miller is putting together for them, and also through tutoring that can help all of our students improve in areas that we know we need to and improve academically. So we're really excited about those opportunities. And then transportation, just a quick update. You know, we're looking pretty good on bus drivers. We can always use more because people get sick, someone gets hurt. So if you know anyone that wants to be a bus driver, have them hit us up because we would love to have them in our pool of drivers. And then also something we're excited about, Dr. Everett shared a little bit about this. So we had every school was provided a bus so they could go through their PBIS expectations trainings with students. What we're really hoping for that is it helps clear up expectations for the students, which reduces discipline. But also, the feedback that we've gotten, it's also really opened up the communication lines between the bus driver, the bus barn, and the schools, which also helps with a lot of those discipline issues that you have because the student's not playing one against the other. We're having those constant communications, and we have teachers that are assigned to buses so they can make those communications and kind of address that student as it happens. So we're excited about that. And then AP Leadership Club, so talked about this a little bit, Dr. Tomlinson did last week, so Assistant Principal Leadership Club. So that kicked off the first meeting. So it's a little club that I put together for our new assistant principals. We have new leadership throughout the district. And we all recognize that being an assistant principal is one of the hardest jobs in the district. You're doing a lot of discipline, you're making a lot of hard conversations. But also, it's usually your first administrative job. And so you don't have a lot of network of people that you can lean on and call. You don't know a lot of other assistant principals. And so we're networking not only with each other within the district, but we've also invited other districts to send some of their new administrators to come over. This last week, we talked simply about, what is your leadership style? How do you get feedback from teachers? How do you make sure that's authentic feedback? Like, this is really what's happening, not just this is what you want to hear? And something we talked a lot about is just how to keep your bucket full, right? So when you become a teacher and administrator, people are always draining your energy bucket or your emotional bucket, and you can't control that. So what are they doing as individuals in the conversations they're having with their families so they can make sure they try and keep their bucket full? So that way, they can provide what our teachers and what our students need while they're at school. So I'm really excited about that opportunity. That's all that I have. Anybody else have any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Last up, Superintendent, for Dr. Tomlinson.
These jokers keep my bucket full every day, so. I wanted to go ahead and make sure that you guys remember that this Friday is our Board of Education Recognition Night at the football game Friday night. So you're actually going to be recognized down on the field between 6:30 and 6:40. So you could be maybe at the concession stand at about 6:30 on Friday night, and then we're going to walk down. We'll first have the presentation of our business partner of the week. And then right after that will be the school board recognition. They're going to recognize you, announce your name, and you can give a little wave to everybody. And then after that, we do have a suite reserved down at the end, down by where the middle school section is, the last section there. And then we're going to have food and refreshments and a place inside for you guys. And we encourage you to bring your family, bring your kids, bring your spouse, bring a friend, whoever you want. And then we're going to all do the same, the ones of us that can be there. And we look forward to you guys coming. So if you have any issues, or if you don't think you can make it, you let me know. Or if you want your name read, even if you can't be there, we can make any adjustments you want to that. But just trying to find different ways to appreciate you guys and also recognize you, but also get us together every once in a while. So Friday Night Lights.
Thank you.
Any questions about that? One of the changes we have going on, so we've talked earlier this year about cabinet responsibilities. And one of the things I've been working on is trying to come up with a good transition plan for all the things that I've done over the previous few years, and yet trying to get these guys up to speed on all the different facets of school administration. And I think this is a good time that we've kind of sat and had some one-on-ones with everyone and determined that we probably didn't hit the mark out of the gate. So I think we're going to make some adjustments to some of our accountabilities and responsibilities that we have. Probably more in the line of human services may have put a little too many things into student services. It's probably the best way to summarize it. So we're currently working on as a cabinet, and we're going to probably make some adjustments and changes to kind of right-size. We want to make sure we're not overworking any one individual, but everybody is playing their part, too. So we're going to continue to work on that, make sure that it's being done right. We're going to have a few adjustments and changes. So some of the HR stuff that Dr. Everett's been working on, we'll probably adjust a little bit. Then we'll move some things around. I'll probably take on some more legal. I think Dr. Bolingmore will probably have a couple more HR things. We'll probably move some of the student teaching pieces that were under Dr. Everett over to academics. So there are going to be some shuffling like that. Once we have that complete, then we're going to send out some communication. I include you guys on it, too, but out to all the district administrators so they better understand who's in charge of what, where they can get help and assistance. But I appreciate everybody's patience with us because, of course, they're new as well. So trying to get them up to speed and see how it all figures out. I think we're maybe a little bit, we missed the mark a tad. Maybe overzealous. But at the same time, I think it's good that we're able to communicate about it openly and come up with and recognize it's a problem and fix it. So that's what we're going to do. Well, here's the list. So it's been done, I just don't know if those three have seen it yet, so. Yeah, I'll bring it down.
They look so excited.
Right? Do we have some upgrade? So these are a couple of things that I think we should at least look at or at least put on our radar. One of the things that we were able to do with Elkhorn was stain the brick. And it looks like it's brand-new construction. It looks like a brand-new building. It's awesome. And so my question to our architects was, why can't we do that at the high school? Because our high school looks a little dated right now. And some of the paint, we have painted brick, and the paint falls off every year. And you see orange behind it. Why someone ever chose that, I'll never know. But there's the opportunity to use the same process that we use at Elkhorn on the entire high school. Now, it would require some different things. There's actually vertical siding pieces used on the pack. So we'd actually have to replace some of those or treat those. But most of it would be staining the brick over the entire high school, the entire thing. It would cost around $200,000. But I think that's just, again, maintenance and to keep it up to date and keep it nice. I think if you take a look at Elkhorn, the results are pretty awesome. So it's something I would definitely like to consider trying to squeeze in this year on this year's budget. And then what I'd like to do is follow up the next year and do the same thing on the Early Childhood Center, once we remove the trailers, right? So once we get Lewis built, everybody moves out, those things go away, we fix the landscaping and everything else, and have all that done, then I'd like to do that same process to the Early Childhood Center so it looks like it's brand-new, just like Elkhorn as well. Again, that one's only going to cost about $75,000 for the entire building. I mean, really, that's, when you think about how big that is, that's pretty cheap. So I think those are great alternatives for a couple of updates on our long-range plan when it comes to facilities. But anyway, I want to touch base with you guys and see, what are your thoughts on that? Are you like, yes, we need to keep working on that? Or, hey, there's other priorities we'd rather focus on? Can you keep kicking that down the road a little bit? Do you have strong feelings one way or the other?
What's that do for the career center, matching wise?
Career center? It's different anyway. So it's actually, it's going to get some work done as well. So Mr. Ruby has actually filled out some grants and been accepted to do some work. We're still trying to figure out what all that's going to entail, but it's probably going to be some facade work. So the front might work different. It will still match it, but it will still, it'll be different just because the architecture's different and the color scheme's different. But it's pretty close.
I'd like to see us move forward and look at it.
Yeah.
I would say that you do know that Elkhorn, the back half is not stained.
Correct. It's just the facing.
Yeah.
Right? The high school would be different because the whole thing's facing from everywhere. It'd be the whole thing.
Because I noticed that when I was out there Friday, I was like, why is that orange?
Yeah.
It's the gym.
A little more.
And it didn't look like it. It's a different kind of brick. So maybe it doesn't.
Would it be the whole hill?
Yeah.
But everybody in the parking lot, they say they do that.
Right.
I'm all for it. I know when we started this whole process prior to cornerstone, it was kind of in our vision of having matching buildings and looking all good. I'm all for it.
It's almost going to be referred to HBC.
Even if we do, it'll be okay. It'll be okay. So I just wanted to bring those things up. I did put in the, we have a tax rate hearing coming up on the 26th where we will be deciding what the tax rate is to implement on the community. Just like we promised the community and we've always had a commitment to, we're going to have the exact same tax rates we've had before. It'll be 5.2262. I know that as a fact. What's been changing and kind of fluctuates is some of the money that can or may come in based on our assessed valuation. So if everybody's not aware, Clay County is a first-class county, I believe is the term for it. And so they get an additional month to hold their Board of Equalization meeting for people to come in and appeal their property taxes. And that may be real estate, it could be agriculture, or it could be personal property. And they go appeal to this board and say, no, this shouldn't be this way, it shouldn't be this way. And so it may go up or down. And so the Board of Equalization has met, we've got those numbers, we're waiting for it to be finalized and official. As soon as those numbers are official, then we'll get all of the numbers put together for the specifics of what that means for our district. At the end of the day, it doesn't change the fact that our tax rate, we're going to stick with our promise. It's going to stay exactly the same as it was last year, down to four decimal places. So that much is a guarantee. The only thing that'll change is how much money that generates or doesn't generate for our budgets based on what our AP Calc's are. And we don't have control over that. That's given to us by Ray County and Clay County. But there's going to be a lot of work in the next couple of days to get all that put together and get it rolling. So I put down here just a few estimates just so you can kind of see the differences. The end total there on that chart shows 5.2262 for last year. And this year, the difference is 70 cents moved from Fund III to Fund I, exactly like we said it would. Everything we've done is exactly what we promised our taxpayers. So I just want to highlight that. I also want to remind everyone that we do have the MSBA Annual Conference coming up and it's going to be the first part of November. I think it's the second through the fourth. And we do have a group from our high school will actually be, one of these student groups was selected to participate in the conference. We're going to have Excelsior Springs High School. And I don't even know if they figured out what they're going to do yet, or?
They're going to focus on community outreach.
Community outreach and it's our student council from the high school, correct?
Yes.
So it's pretty exciting. So if you do have a chance to go down to the conference, I really encourage you to go by and see our students.
Are they participating or are they in the exhibits?
They are presenting as part of the showcase.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you get a chance, if you happen to be down for a meeting, or if you can get to it and actually go by and see them or introduce yourself, I think that'd be great. So.
Last year, we went on that Friday, or we tried to go together, it was a good one on Friday. Is that still the plan? Like to go?
We still can do that.
Or one day?
I'm planning on presenting at it. So I'm going to have a different itinerary than you guys will.
Yeah. I'll take one of the vehicles now.
Yeah.
We'll ride together.
Well, I just, I'm thinking of work.
Yeah.
Because I'll have to take leave or something. So I need to know, are we doing Thursday and Friday? Or are we just doing Friday like we did last year?
Isn't it Friday, Saturday?
It's Thursday, Friday. Not as much on Saturday, but there are, this is that.
What's on Thursday?
I'm good with either one of both. Just find out what works for everybody.
Isn't it not us?
Thursday's usually like workshops for like, for president, secretary.
That's funny. Okay, can you answer my question?
And sometimes they have like the opening keynote speaker can sometimes be there too.
Okay. All right.
But we can work all those things out. And yes, if you guys want to, we can plan things where we can all go down as a group. We can even set up a lunch for everyone. We can set up a dinner for everyone.
Sure.
We missed those things. I think we went out. That's what we have been as involved with here.
I think you just need to let us know. If that's something you guys would like to see done, let us know and we'll move forward with it. Deal? Any questions about that? I do have some updates on Lewis. I don't know if anybody's driven. Do you ever just find yourself jumping in the cars to go check it out once in a while? Like I totally do. I'll just go drive. Sometimes I just drive back in the construction area and everybody looks at me like, why are you doing that? I'm like, I don't care. I want to see it. But it's pretty cool to see the progress it's made. So if you haven't been down there lately, you definitely should at least drive by. They have all of the, what, rubbish, wreckage, whatever you want to call it, has all been disposed of and all removed from the location. Everything now is about building it up. So we're, all demolition's complete. Everything is about construction. They have a level ground area where the pad will end up going in. And they've already poured 150-foot-long concrete, I think they called it a bridge was the term for it.
Wide enough to be a bridge.
Well, it's, it's built in a way that kind of anchors the building. Like instead of just having individual piers, like it corners in the middle, they did this bridge down the whole wall there that'll be next to where the alleyway is. And so they've already poured that and it's already in. And now they're going to start putting footings in. And the next thing you'll really see is the parking lots will go in next so that people aren't driving through the mud and gravel and tracking all that in once the building starts. Steel's already been ordered. Steel's supposed to be in and complete by the end of the year, end of the calendar year. And they should have the pre-cast, which is actually the big pieces of concrete that go in for the gym so that it's a storm shelter. And that should go in either the end of December, first of January, I think they said. And the team wanted to come and talk to you guys at the January board meeting to kind of give you an update of where we're at. I said, that seems like a good timeline once they have some actual stuff going up. So it was very exciting. Good updates today. Everything's looking good. We're just, we're right on budget. We're a little bit, maybe $90,000 off right now. But we also have some contingencies that we haven't worked with. So we're going to have to make some design decisions when it comes to budgeting because I've told them over and over again, 35 million, that's our, that's our budget. So we'll keep working on those. But we have a long list of wants and then we're going to see if those are truly needs or not when it comes down to, just like when you build a house, right? Like, man, I really want that granite.
A $35 million house?
Yeah. Pretty good deal when you think about it. If you saw a house that big, you'd think it's worth 35 million. So any questions about Lewis, the project, how things are going with it?
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, Caruser Building Report, Mr. Ruby.
What is this thing?
This is a high quality construct. This is nice, very nice.
He must have a big budget.
Budget bracers.
It's fancy.
See what you do though.
There you go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I just want to give you guys some quick updates on some career data and some things that are happening in our world. First thing I want to talk about is our, finished up our post-secondary placement data for the previous year. So just a reminder, we do 180-day follow-up with all of our students and our goal is to get them positively placed into the area of the program they completed. So you can see here on the first slide, we have broken down by program, what the placement percent was. And our goal and what we would like ideally would be around 75%. And that's around, that's what the state average is, is 75%. So for some of our programs, we're hitting that. Some of our programs are a little bit harder to hit just because some of those programs, it's hard to get into that industry until you either have more schooling or you have a certain age requirement for some of those. So overall, we hit about almost 67% total. For our sitting school, this is our sitting school follow-up data as well too. So we track all of that. It all counts towards us for our overall percent. For Excelsior, we've been working, we worked with Dr. Everett at the end of the year. We had, on the previous school year, we had a lot of kids that we couldn't get ahold of. So that kind of hurt, hurt our placement data because we couldn't claim if we knew what they were doing. So for whatever reason, these kids disappear at the graduation like D.B. Cooper and you can't track them down. So at the end of last year, Dr. Everett and the high school made sure every kid filled out a card with contact information. So that way, when we do our 180-day follow-up here in a couple of months, we actually can get some accurate and know exactly where they're at. So that was one thing that the high school helped us out with. And then we're also working with our sitting schools too, to make sure they're accurately tracking their follow-up data as well. So as you can see, some of the schools have hit a pretty high number. Some of them are slacking just a little bit. But obviously, the 67%, that's a little bit, it's kind of fluctuated up and down since COVID. State average is right around 72, 73%. So I'd like to be a little bit above that. So we'd love to be around that 75 to 80% mark. Next, the other thing that we measure, another thing that we measure is our industry-recognized credentials, our IRCs. These are things that kids earn, credentials that students earn that let potential workers or employers know that they have the competency, the skills and the knowledge to enter that profession. So we encourage our kids to take as many of those as possible to make themselves as marketable as possible when they graduate. So for last year, our kids earned 371 IRCs and TSAs, which is about, it was a little bit more than last year. From the previous year, we, it was about 320. So we're continuing to look for ways for kids to earn those different types of credentials. Just for the main thing is just being as marketable as possible once you leave us. You show employers that you have to, like I said, the aptitude and the willingness to take these. So it gives you kind of a leg up on when you enter the workforce. So the other thing that you'll hear a lot about, and I'm sure from other people as well too, is work-based learning hours. That's becoming a much bigger thing at the state level. They're really encouraging kids to get out there and get as much, many hours towards work as possible while they're in school. So our kids were able to complete over 10,000 hours of work-based learning hours during the 2023 school year, 22, 23 school year. So whether that be internships, job shadows, we, we highly encourage our kids to get out there and participate as much as possible in future fields so they get an idea of what they can do. You heard it from, at the end of the year, you heard from a couple of our students that were placed. You know, they're, have great opportunities. We have some great partnerships with different companies that actively seek out our kids to get them hired and actually make a lot more money than I did when I was 18. So they're, that's pretty proud of that. Last year, we also sent a lot of kids to state or state competition. We ended up with five state champions, five silver medalists and three bronze medalists. So we got to send three kids to nationals. The two kids there in the top, look at them, working on a computer. Those were our two cybersecurity students. They finished seventh at nationals. So the entire country, they finished seventh overall. And then our firefighter, firefighting student there in the bottom left, he finished seventh in nationals as well too. So we were very proud of them. And then there's the two students there in the top right, they were our, one of our, part of our robotics teams. And they finished runner-up at state. And the team that got first actually won nationals. So it's a pretty heated contest at state. So there was some disagreements on scoring. So, but shows you how good they are. And they're, luckily those are both juniors, so they're back this year. So hopefully we have a stacked team heading into nationals for, for state competitions for this year. And then lastly, I'll head on, or I'm sorry, for enrollment, not lastly, but enrollment numbers for this year. We're a little bit down this year. We were unable to find a qualified FIRE EMT teacher. So that's going to hurt our numbers a little bit. Our other programs, about the same numbers as last year if you take out that. Good news is, I've already have two people reached out, promising leads for next year for our FIRE EMT class. So hopefully we can get that back up and rolling. Just really hard to find somebody that's certified in both of those areas. They take quite a bit of intricate certifications, especially being able to teach as well. So it kind of makes it even more difficult. So enrollment numbers are good. Like I said, just without this, without that couple of programs, down just a little bit from this year. And then lastly, just kind of like a heads up of what we're working on. Obviously, we're always looking and trying to improve our recruitment practices. So we already have shadow visits set up with our sitting schools and potential students. We're, we go out, Ms. Smith and I go out to a lot of site visits to visit our schools and get information out to potential students. And then just obviously the marketing of all of our programs. Partnerships, we love sending our kids out to internships. Again, letting them do shadow visits with different companies and different industries. And then we, one way we strengthen those relationships with our advisory meetings. So we have, we allow anybody that wants to to be on our, those advisory meetings for our programs where we learn, hey, these are industry trends, best way to, especially for our kids, like what, what people are looking for. And then too, for us, like what are some tools and things that we need to be using and implementing so that our kids are ready when they get into industry. Program improvements, we're going to want to try to build in our skills ELSA success from last year. We had a lot of great, the building wide last year, we're again building wide this year. So we're continuing the momentum with that. Grant opportunities, we're always, always looking for money. We're always looking for free money. So Rick, to kind of talk about what you said about the facade stuff, we did earn a grant and we are kind of working with IDS as well too on kind of like facade upgrades and entry updates as well too, to our center. And then always looking for PD for instructors. A lot, most of our instructors don't come from educational backgrounds. So for them, this is new for them. So getting them set up with mentors and getting them anything they need to, to help them be successful. As Dr. Bulmore said, we're always looking for program expansions. So this year, we were going to put out a, for our requirement for our Perkins grant, it's called a comprehensive local needs assessment, so CLNA. And so we'll get information from all of our sitting schools, community members on potential programs they want, some things that they think we can do better. So it's just one of those things and how we can better serve our, not only our students, but our community and our sitting schools. So we're always looking for ways to explore. And then also one of the things too is, one of the options is that homeschool enrollment. So if we do have kids at our homeschool and have it, might want to think about entering the trades, we can explore options for that as well too. And then going back to the program expansion, we are constantly looking to add new different programs. One of our things too is just kind of juggling space, constantly evaluating program numbers, enrollment. So is there programs that we can see maybe we can improve or do we need to replace? So there's, I mean, there's one of the, a couple of the ones that are very popular right now that with our sitting schools that we hear from counselors and students is welding, obviously. A lot of people want that physical therapy, sports medicine type program, which I think we can definitely look to add. That'd be an easy one. And then also strengthening our marketing programs at the high school. Been working with Dr. Wickham and some of the high school teachers of getting, making sure we're getting those, offering all the different programs that we have available. And then that way, that'll also increase our CTE numbers as well too. So that's kind of the updates for us so far this year and continually looking for ways to get better. So come by, stop by anytime if you want to take a tour.
Another question for you.
Yeah.
On your numbers, does that show what kids that are, went directly to work? Or is that kids that went directly to work?
So yeah, it's a great question. I should have explained that better. So the way we get positive place is if you continue your education in the field or if you go to work in the field. So it's both of those. And then it hurts us if you don't continue your education in the field or don't work in that field.
Yeah.
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mark, did you feel that buzz from review?
I heard that it's Caruser, never, never. All I heard. Higher numbers.
Slurps. Going on the moment.
Exactly.
Next up, approval of Director of District Foundation Job Description Position.
So this is a new development that occurred over the last couple of months. So in working with the leadership of the educational foundation, we were struggling to see some of the money come in that would justify having a director position to oversee it. So if we don't generate as much money as it costs, then it becomes an actual drain on academics as opposed to a benefit to it. And so we talked, we actually met with leadership from the foundation and with the district. And we had a meeting to talk about what possible solutions would be. And the decision was made to stop having an educational foundation, but it had folded into the community foundation. So they would take over some of those things. The district would still have ownership over the funding and decisions over some of that, but they would be kind of the, the gatekeeper and the central clearinghouse for all of our foundations. At the same time, we still need to have somebody within the district who can oversee that and make those decisions, help with the teacher grant applications, the admissions, and then rolling that money out, making sure that it's being spent on things that are going to help students. So what our recommendation was, is to actually create a stipend. And this would be one of the cabinet-level administrators. In this case, it would be Dr. Miller. And, but first we wanted to make sure that you guys understood that we were adding this stipend in this position. Previously, we were spending about roughly $20,000 a year. So that would take it from 20,000 down to 4,000 annually. And then with the community foundation's commitment to work with us as well. So it's a savings for us. And then more of that money can go towards students and teachers and actual academic programming.
You need a motion in the dirt?
I do.
So move. Second, first by Rick, a second by Kitty. Anybody have questions? I'm assuming Dr. Miller has been spoke to about this.
I actually.
As we were talking about.
Thank you, Sharon, as always. Thank you for sticking up.
As we were just talking about how we were moving things.
Your eyes get real big and she was like, oh my gosh.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm just, you know, watching out for a view.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing that, all those in favor. And that passes six to zero. And the second part of that is approval of the Director of District Foundation Staff. I guess that's kind of all in one, because you already said it.
Yeah, this was just the cover sheet that went along with that, my recommendation.
Thanks.
She has pretty much to do lately.
It's very related.
Honestly, all of it goes through me anyway because I won't let anything in a classroom without my approval. So it just makes it sexy.
You just cut out the middle man.
All right. Last but not least, the approval of the aspiring leaders program.
I can't wait.
Mr. Marshall.
So excited.
So excited.
Good evening. I am Sarah Wickham, Principal at the High School.
I'm Jared Marshall, Activity Director.
And we're excited to talk with you tonight about our idea for an aspiring leaders program. And we are recommending four administrative interns with a stipend of two thousand dollars. So as we each, so as we go through this, kinda have that in your mind. Uh, really, our passion for this comes from leadership development. And how do we pour into our teachers who are interested in school leadership, possibly later on, district level leadership? To, to make that jump, you really need people to invest in you, to provide you with experiences and to allow you to see behind the curtain a little bit of what happens with school leadership. So we wanna share a little bit about our own personal experiences. Um, my journey as an administrator, uh, I started in the classroom, but then had an instructional coach position and then had an opportunity to have a full year-long administrative intern position. I don't really know if I would be a principal standing here before you today without that administrative intern experience. It allowed me to be competitive with peers and competitive with candidates from other districts who had administrative experience or intern experiences. Uh, Mr. Marshall has a little different experience, but I think it is important in sharing this opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Wickham. When I, when I decided to start my journey in administration, uh, I think from a neighbor's, the school district that did not offer such a program. Uh, the people that I was going to go up against for these positions were all coming in with experience and therefore coming over the top of me every time. Um, so in order for me to become an administrator for twenty years now, I had to uproot my family from Kansas City and move a hundred miles away because I didn't have the opportunity for aspiring mentorship, uh, through the district I was working in. I went one year, a hundred miles away with three little boys and came back the next year and I got a job at the same district I live. So one year going somewhere else made me a viable candidate just because I could say I had signed a contract and I had led a building for one year. We're wanting to offer that same opportunity to our fine teachers here at Excelsior. So they don't have to uproot their families, don't have to move away, just to say that they got some experience and now they're on a competitive playing field with people from outside our district.
I think too, one of the things that we've talked about is, in my short time being here, one of the things, a trend that I've noticed and that we've talked about is that we do have several current building and district administrators who formerly held the role of interventionist at the high school, which is a position that allows you to really get, uh, perspective on that whole building scope, um, see how you plan and implement things at a building level. And we no longer have that position. And so we've really been thinking about how do we provide those experiences in our district for our teachers who are interested to be able to get that insight. And so, uh, we'll just highlight really quickly a couple of key areas where we feel like we can provide aspiring administrators some experience. What we really wanna offer is a personalized mentoring, um, experience for teachers. Um, we know that some may be more interested in being an athletic director. We know that some may be more interested in being a building principal or, or a district level role. So we've talked about some different areas. We feel like instructional leadership is a must. Uh, knowing how do you have conversations, coaching conversations with teachers? How do you plan for whole building improvement, um, and learning? How do you, uh, hire great people and keep them? Uh, those are all things that we feel like we can provide some insight to. With that would also be school programming. How do you develop student leadership opportunities? How do you provide, uh, interventions that work and know if they're effective? Uh, those are all really important things at a school level. Uh, and without some opportunity to really get insight into that, we feel like teachers are at a disadvantage if they're trying to compete for an administrative role.
I know that probably one hundred percent of all first-year administrators, when they get that job, they're excited. They jump in and they have no idea what they got into. This is gonna give them a look inside. And to be real honest with you, some people may get into this program and go, "You know what? This isn't for me. I'm gonna stay in the classroom. I'm really happy with what I do. I don't think I can handle this." Um, other people, they're gonna get super excited about it and continue to grow. So we're just trying to give them some perspective and competitiveness with outside people trying to come in, into our district.
Do you wanna share a little bit about the athletic opportunities?
I just.
On your side?
I was, I was the head coach for ten years. I thought I knew everything there was about athletics. Uh, I coached four different sports. I got in the athletic role. Uh, my first year, I didn't have a clue what I was doing. You've gotta have experience actually doing it. The scheduling part of it, uh, finding workers. If you show up to an athletic event and you just notice the athletic event, then I've absolutely done my job. Uh, but there's so many moving parts to every one of our events. It's, you know, I just tell everybody we're putting on a show. You know, time for a show. You know, we got volleyball game night. Here we go. So from scheduling officials to scheduling opponents to making sure eligibility rosters, um, making sure our coaches have their certifications done, it's, it's a big job. Uh, but I didn't understand that because I didn't have any experience when I got the job. So again, sneak peek in, into what we do. Uh, we're not trying to give them our jobs, but at least they're getting a chance to see what we do and how we do it.
I think the only other piece that we haven't highlighted would be some insight into school operation. So how does just the daily functioning of the building go? How do you plan for facilities? How do you work through different safety situations and have effective communications at the school level? And how do you, I think I feel most passionate about, how do you balance all of this? Um, how do you not let the daily operations take over to where you can never get to the instructional work? So we're excited about the opportunity to, uh, really partner with teachers and allow them to grow and develop knowledge and skills that will help them be competitive, um, for administrative positions. Very excited about some conversations we've had with our district leadership about how we can also have kind of a mirrored experience at the building level and the district level so they really see both of those, uh, leadership ones. So with that, we would love to recommend approval of the aspiring leaders program.
And how many, you may have said it, how many are you expecting to do this with this year?
So we are seeking four, uh, administrative interns with a two thousand dollar stipend each. Um, I would love to see that grow in the future, but we feel like that's a, a great place to start.
I love it.
Is it open to all building levels?
It is.
But they have to have, I was looking in there, they have to have certain requirements, masters and everything.
Yes, well, the, the idea behind that is someone that's a first-year teacher coming out, they're not prepared for this.
Right.
Uh, and they, you know, we're looking for people who, who have been preparing for this. I can apply.
God, for aspiring into different roles and, you know, you didn't, you said you didn't want them to take your job, but you gotta train people to take over those jobs when they're ready to retire.
Some of us are getting older.
So you think you have four spots and they do, right? There's four different spots. So have you already, have people that are wanting to do this program ready? How are you wanting to accept them? Are you choosing for?
They may be treated just like we would treat, uh, adult teachers that should be open to, see who's under risk. I mean, we may have thirty people and they have four people and they have three. You know, we don't know until they open it up. Well, I think it'll be interesting. I, what was the experience going there?
I, I think that will be competitive. Uh, we've also talked about district leadership without. That people feel like they have an opportunity no matter what level they're at and that, that our district, um, leadership is also part of that selection process.
So it's a great way to get some of those district goals accomplished and then just through your aspiring leaders. So it's a win-win. Win for them and it's a win for students.
Motion. Alright, we got a motion to approve by Rick.
Second.
Second by Kitty. Any other questions? All those in favor? That passes six to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Very good.
Alright, this time I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Alright, so, uh, I just wanna say as a, somebody who's lost a father and an uncle to suicide in the past, um, I just wanna say thank you to Excelsior Springs High School, uh, StuCo and the faculty that represent them. Um, everybody, I think Jim Paget was one of them that, um, helped put, uh, put it on. Um, they had a, uh, little get-together at the high school football field. Um, I brought my child, um, one of my four, and, um, we had a picnic on the football field. Um, everybody got together. It was a nice little moment. Um, uh, Ms. Paget brought up, uh, the hotline number is nine eight, nine eight eight, uh, for any mental health, um, notifications and such. Um, so I just wanna say thank you to the Excelsior Springs, uh, High School Student Council for putting that on.
She have thing up there? entertain a motion to adjourn? So move. First by her.
Second.
Second by Jill. All those in favor? That passes six to zero. Have a good evening.